Good morning Birmingham. Today is Tuesday, September 26th. The time is 9:35. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today's invocation will be led by Reverend Dr. David W. Craig, Pastor of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Council Pro Tem Crystal Smitherman. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
Good morning, Council. President Alexander, bless you all. It's a blessing to be here today. We thank God for this privilege to share in this meeting. Let us pray. Father, we come now in the name of Jesus. We honor you and we praise you, dear God, for who you are. We thank you, dear God, for the privilege of being here today. We thank you for our council and our mayor. We pray, dear God, your blessings on them. Give them wisdom and knowledge, dear God, as they preside over the affairs of our city. We commit this meeting to you, dear God, asking, Lord, you to favor this city. Lord, it continue to grow and let it continue to be blessed. We pray your blessings over everything and all the things that will take place today. Lord, we ask your blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise God.
... of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with no end.
Thank you. I'm not sure if my mic is on. Can you hear me? Thank you Reverend Craig for that very thoughtful prayer. We appreciate you. Reverend Craig is the D7 son of Roosevelt City, and we thank you for your service to our community. This time, Madam Clerk, if we could call the roles.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Councilor Pro Tem Smitherman. Good morning. Council President Alexander.
President, thank you. Counselors, if I could get a motion and a second for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings of June 6th and June 13th, 2023. Do you move?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying nay.
Thank you very much. Those minutes of June 6th and June 13th are approved. The minutes are not ready for the meetings of June 20, 2023 through September 19th, 2023. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning to the entire council. Good morning to the public. It's good to see everybody this morning. A few notes and one proclamation, Madam President and council. First note is Morehouse Tuskegee Classic is two Saturdays from now, October 7th. If you didn't know, it's known as the longest-running NCAA Division II classic in the nation. The Morehouse Tuskegee Classic will take place at Legion Field. Gate will open at 5:00 p.m., kickoff will be at 7:00 p.m., and it's not... The good news is your favorite football teams aren't playing at the same time. As you can get tickets, are now on sale, and can be purchased by visiting morehousetuskegeeclassic.com. As the council know, as part of our budget process that kicked off starting July 1, there was a need and an urging for more employees in PEP. I'm happy to publicly announce that the sanitation and ordinance inspectors are sought, and those positions are now available. Department of Planning, Engineering, and Improvements is seeking to hire four sanitation and ordinance inspectors. The ideal candidates will be certified in Alabama Peace Officer Standards and Training. Recently retired police officers are also strongly encouraged to apply, and you can visit Johnson County Personnel Board's website at jobsquest.org. Again, that's J-O-B-S-Q-U-E-S-T.org. Many of you either came into City Hall today before you came here or took some way on the second floor. But that has to say that the City of Birmingham's exhibit, Through His Eyes, the photography of Chris McNair will close this Friday, September 29th. This collection of image, which is located on the second floor of City Hall, pays tribute to Birmingham's civil rights era through the eyes of the late photographer Chris McNair. I just want to encourage everybody, before the 29th, be sure to check it out before it's gone. And for more information, you can visit birminghamal.gov/mcnairexhibit or simply enter the second floor of City Hall. Couple notes as it relates to uniform trash update as well as regular trash update. For single-family residences that have not yet received a uniform garbage cart from the city, the final delivery phase is now taking place. Please note, again, that this distribution will take up to six weeks. When you receive your complimentary cart, please retrieve the information packet and note, please do not begin to use the cart immediately. I repeat, do not begin to use it until more instructions are given via a letter from Public Works. Identify your new pickup date and start date. Until then, continue to place your household garbage on the curb side as you usually do. And if you have any questions, you can text BHAMREADY. Again, you can text BHAMREADY to 888-777, or go on the city's website at birminghamal.gov/pickup for more information on the distribution of the uniform trash bins. I want to acknowledge my media team as well as Dr. Darrell O'Quinn, his family and his team. We had a deep dive and got our volunteer training at Oliver Elementary School to learn how to be reading tutors. It's not enough just to read to a child as it relates to Page Pals, but to understand the comprehensions and the building blocks of reading so our children can be ready when the test is taken next spring. We decided to do Oliver Elementary School. Of course, that school is in his district. But it was one of the first schools I visited this year, and they had some of the lowest numbers. So we're going to partner and we're going to use that school as an example of us giving our time, the 2.0 version of Page Pals, how to do one-on-one with children. And so I want to encourage all the council, all the corporate Birmingham, small business Birmingham, faith community of Birmingham, and everybody else, individuals, parents, et cetera, to sign up for Page Pals because we're still seeking volunteers via readers and tutors from Birmingham City Schools, third grade classrooms. As you know, the goal is to help students boost their reading levels. And so you can select the school and the time by going to bhameufirst.org-pagepals. Again, that's bhameufirst.org-pagepals. And again, as I've encouraged businesses and other organizations, if you have any questions, you can actually call U First Services at 320-0879. Again, that's 320-0879. Of course, is it that area code is 205. Last note, Madam President, and probably one that I share with a little sadness. But I can explain that in a minute. I want Dr. Mark Wilson, his family, his colleagues, and anyone else with him to come up at this time. And if he's here by himself, since I'm not looking, let me know, Madam President. He is by himself? He's such a... Yeah, come on up here, sir. Madam President and council, at this time, the City of Birmingham proudly joins Dr. Wilson's family along with the Jefferson County Health Department in celebrating this young man's retirement. I would like to say that I think we all know, even pre-COVID, that he dutifully served as the Jefferson County Health Officer and head of Jefferson County Health Department since 2011. We want to pay tribute to his work and legacy, in part with the proclamation that I'll read only in part, and I want to share some personal words on our experience. In the states where as Dr. Wilson brought forth more than two decades of expertise in primary care, inpatient teaching service, and medical staff leadership at Cooper Green Mercer Hospital, to his esteemed role showcasing his unwavering commitment to the health and well-being of our community. He exhibited remarkable leadership during the trying times of the COVID-19 pandemic, taking resolute and decisive measures to safeguard the citizens, thus earning the profound respect and gratitude of our community. And whereas throughout his illustrious tenure at JCDH, Dr. Wilson has consistently prioritized addressing the multitude of public health challenges, encompassing drug addiction and overdose fatalities, infant mortality, HIV, and viral hepatitis... Look, I got to get the word right. And viral hepatitis outbreaks, tobacco consumption, obesity, limited access to nutritious sustenance, physical inactivity, violence, and homicide, all while championing health equity as a guiding principle. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Wood, and along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby issue this celebrating the retirement of Dr. Mark Wilson. His unwavering commitment to enhancing the health and well-being of our community has left a legacy and one that will continue to inspire us in the years ahead. Before he comes up, I want to say a few things. I met Dr. Wilson... I don't even remember the year, Doc. But I sat on a few boards, and he was always present as it related to his role in the community of not just Birmingham, but all of Jefferson County. I listened to some of those things I rolled off as it relates to what he prioritized. I saw it up close and personal. If you start with just getting people moving and the whole idea of people being healthy, his relationship with the freshwater land trusts and the vision and conjunction they laid out, and actually not just talking about it, but putting his money where his mouth was as it relates to helping expand walking trails in Jefferson County, literally to get people moving and active. It's one of the easiest things you can do from a prevention standpoint as it relates to health. It wasn't just a perfunctory thing he did, right? He truly believed in it and did it, and I saw it up close. As it relates to, and I remember this in 2019 vividly, pre-COVID, if you recall, we declared gun violence a public health crisis in Birmingham, and the partner in this who stood beside us was the Health Officer of Jefferson County, co-leading in that effort, which eventually led to the hospital-based violence prevention program. He has been the partner. I guess we got to figure out who else to talk to now, sir. And so many other things, which leads me probably to one of the last things I can say about him. You know, we bought Doc last... Two weeks ago, who was getting ready to be appointed by the president. But this young man is literally, I think I called him every day, or he called me. One of us called each other, and we talked about the hard decisions we needed to make. And he got blasted, okay, by partisan people, by the state. I think they even tried to create a law to take all health officers' power away because of the decisive decisions he made in real time, in a critical time, when residents of Jefferson County were literally dying. And he did everything he could to save lives. And I saw it up close. I saw the cost he paid professionally and personally. And I've just admired his leadership over the years in all aspects. And I just want to publicly state to you, Doc, in front of the council, literally hate to see you go, grateful for your leadership. Hope you have a happy retirement. Thank you for your service to all the residents of Jefferson County.
I didn't prepare a speech, but I'm pretty good at winging it. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Mayor. It really has been a dear, dear relationship. I'm very grateful and grateful for the partnership with the mayor's office and the city council. I've gotten to know each of you personally, and it's just been a real pleasure. Our Health Department is just one health department and one organization. Public health is so much bigger than one organization. So I think part of my legacy has been partnership and relationships. And I'm very grateful for the partnership that we've had with the city over the years. There are a lot of challenges, as you all know. You are all trying to address those challenges every day. So there's a lot to be done. It's very, very hard, despite all the good work that we do, to actually improve the health of a whole community. It takes a lot of work, and we can't do it alone. The Health Department does have a new strategic plan, which I think will be shared with you soon. And it continues to have health equity as its center, as its underpinning. And it's about more partnership, more collaboration, and not less because we have to work together to be successful going forward. But it has been just a huge, huge privilege to serve as health officer. I've said many times, if you're the kind of person who wants to do good, who wants to make a difference in the community, and you happen to have a medical degree, it's probably the best job in the whole state. So I have really counted it as a privilege. I'm very, very grateful for having been given the opportunity. And I'm also looking forward to a lot of great work ahead that will be done by our department. It's a very strong institution. And we have a great person who has taken my place, whom I think all of you have gotten to know, Dr. David Hicks. I'm just extremely proud that he will be my successor, and I'm looking forward to him doing some really great things. So again, thank you so much for this very kind proclamation and recognition.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn.
Well, couldn't let the occasion pass without thanking you. You know, I don't know if folks appreciate how public health intersects with city government and our public infrastructure. And all across Jefferson County, we can see the impact of the Jefferson County Health Department's leadership in greenways, trails, sidewalks, and really improving our public infrastructure to directly impact public health. It should be no secret to anyone that obesity is an epidemic in our community. And not having proper infrastructure for people to walk to their neighborhood park or get out and, you know, be able to access the needs that they have for living a good quality of life by walking, biking, or using public transit. That's something that I've seen Jefferson County Department of Health over the last more than a decade really emphasize and work on. And see, you can go out and put your hands and feet on these things and use them. And I think that's something that's been truly impactful, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott.
Dr. O'Quinn said everything I wanted to say, but I'm going to talk anyway because you are my constituent, and I am very proud that you are. You have been the greatest leader of the Health Department that I think we've ever had. And I say that because you responded to the COVID pandemic with such dignity and class when people were throwing stones and other things at you for making decisions that were in the best interest of the citizens. There's some people who've forgotten that the citizens are the ones that we're supposed to be serving, but, you know, people have short memories sometimes. Politics get in the middle. So I just want to say thank you for not being reactive, but being proactive about people's health because all of us are touched. And my mother worked for the Health Department for what seemed like forever. And now she's 100 years old, so it's been a little bit. But two people, she and one other lady from her lab, are still kicking around the neighborhood. So... But thank you for all that you've done and for your... Just your whole attitude has been uplifting. And enjoy your retirement. I'm enjoying mine. You can't tell, but...
I also... Go ahead, Councilor Williams.
No, I think that everything's been covered. But Dr. Wilson, thank you so much for your work. And I think that, as Dr. O'Quinn said, it would be very easy for you to have a very narrow view of what public health is and stay in a very small lane. But you chose to go beyond that, and it benefited not only this county, but this metro area. So thank you so much. I have two walking trails, by the way, that I'm working on. And so if you want to pass that on to Dr. Hicks, we would love the funding. But in all seriousness, it really... Your leadership and your ability to look at public health, I can tell your passion through it, and thank you so much for all the work that you've done.
Thank you. Councilor Tate.
Ma'am, thank you, Madam President. Dr. Wilson, I have to echo my colleagues, but I also want to thank you and these colleagues of mine, the councilor, president, me, coming to the council, working with you with the HVIAP and declaring gun violence as a public health threat. And the mayor as well, so thank you for that. And, you know, staying behind the scenes, working, you know, to get the HVIAP is very important. It's, you know, it's a great tool, you know, for Birmingham. You're saying you're retiring, but I'm going to still be knocking at your door, picking your brain for some other initiatives and things that we are, you know, trying to flesh out behind the scene as well. But thank you, you know, for stepping out the box and making that happen.
Thank you. Madam... Dr. Wood.
I'm schooling a little early for a while. Well, no, like I said, just wanted to celebrate you today, man. Congratulations on retirement. Great appreciation for, you know, specifically your leadership overall, but, you know, especially during COVID. You know, a lot of people can do it, but when they get thrown in the fire, you really get to see what people are made of. And I know we were all very impressed with that. But, you know, just your willingness to be accessible. I mean, if we called and needed you to hop on a Zoom call with 30 residents, you would be willing to do that. So we appreciate you, a well-earned retirement. So make sure you take some time to be retired before you get back busy again. But congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I don't know about you guys, but I feel like everybody should just serve the same amount of time as us because I'm like, I don't want you to go. Like, you have to stay here as long as we have to be here. But no, really, thank you so much. You know, I... We go to NLC all the time, and I don't think I've heard of any city that has the same relationship with their Health Department the way we do. As everybody's kind of said, community has been your number one thing. And you really don't see a lot about that, the Health Department caring about every race, every gender, every part of the state. When we were at the Aspen Institute, the Jefferson County Health Department educated us, talking about the mortality rate and talking about our infants dying, and really educated us not only about the health crisis of Birmingham, but the whole state. So I just want to thank you over and over again for your leadership during the pandemic. We don't know how many lives you have saved just because you stepped out there when really the rest of the state had a different opinion about how we could handle the pandemic. And so I just really want to thank you so much, your accessibility, how much you work with us, and we're really going to miss you. And don't be a stranger, come back. Just come back. So thank you and congratulations. I wish you all the best.
Yes, Councilor Clark.
Well, Dr. Mark, it's... Congratulations to you. I want to just hold up the work that you all did in Collegeville because JT's not here, so I'm just going to give you a shout out for that. Stepping up in, you know, it's not really the agency with that primary responsibility, but seeing a gap and stepping up and issuing citations and taking some tough action and helping to advance the cause of clean air and, you know, cleaning up the ground in Collegeville. So important for all of Birmingham and just, you know, above and beyond. And it was nice to hang out with you and your son for my first Kahaba Waterlilies tour. Got to hang out with you all all day. So I know you know how to relax in nature. But hopefully you'll still be around and we'll still have access to your wisdom. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I'll end this out and close this out. I echo all of the comments that have been made by both the mayor and my colleagues. I just wanted to thank you personally for your guidance and your leadership and your support during the time that I've been on the council to help us make decisions that were in the best interest of our residents, from health equity to environmental issues to COVID. You've been right there at the forefront. And as most... Many people may not know, behind the scenes, you've been a very guiding force and a calming force for all of us. And when politics reared its ugly head into some of the decisions that had to be made, you continued to think about the medical effort and what this would do for our residents. So I thank you for that. I think one colleague and I, we know what a happy, sad occasion it can be to retire. And so we just want to say, we hope you have a great time with retirement. We don't want you to retire and we don't see you again. Want to encourage you to stay with us, which I know you will. I also want to personally thank you for the residents of District 7, for the work that you did on the board for Red Mountain Park, and how you helped us to open up those 3D mines and get people out there walking and moving along those trails. So really appreciate you for that. So thank you again. Thank you.
Madam President and council, we got to get this young man out of here so he can enjoy retirement. But before he leaves, Madam President, can we get a little grace call audible? Can Dr. Wilson and I come up and we just all take a photo together?
Thank you.
And when we're done, that concludes the mayor's report.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, counselors, without objection, we will suspend our agenda at this time to allow for presentations and so that we can continue in that same vein. And so Councilor Darrell O'Quinn has a presentation of resolution.
Well, go with the flow.
Good morning, council. I want to take time to recognize one of our emerging young retailers, and I want to offer a resolution and recognition of her accomplishments. So I'll just... So I'll just read a little bit of the resolution, then I'll ask Ms. Taylor to come and give some comments. Whereas it is the custom of this legislative body to recognize and commend those distinguished citizens who would devote their life's work and purpose to community service, contributing to the welfare of the citizens of their communities and this great city. Attentive to such concern and in full accord with its longstanding traditions, the Council of the City of Birmingham is justly proud to honor Ayesha Taylor on her designation as the recipient of Alabama's 2023 G Emerging Retailer of the Year Award. The award is given annually to an innovative and effective Alabama retailer who has been in business for at least two years, but less than five. And whereas Ayesha is the CEO and owner of Bridge and Root, an upscale men's boutique launched in 2021, the boutique offers 40 brands with more than half unique to Birmingham. Strategies such as customer segmentation and enhanced visual merchandising have grown the clientele base to nearly 1,600 clients in two years. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring pauses in its deliberations to congratulate Ayesha Taylor on her designation as the recipient of the Alabama's 2023 G Emerging Retailer of the Year Award by the Alabama Retail Association. Her outstanding achievements serve as an inspiration and example for others to emulate. Presented this day, 26th day of September 2023, at the recommendation of Counselor O'Quinn, move the resolution.
Second. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Now the item. First we did unanimous consent, so now the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn.
Well, I just want to say thank you for this. This is an honor that I cannot encompass really into words, but I want to say thank you. Whereas a lot of people think that owning a boutique is like, feels like a lot of glamour. That's probably about five, maybe three percent. The other 97% is a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, sometimes tears. A lot of happiness just because I'm living my dream. This is a dream that I had over 10 years ago, and I've worked really, really hard for it, and I am just so happy to be here. Having the city support me in this way is just, I just, again, can't really put it into words. And so I'm just really, just excited to be here. Where we offer, we do offer sought-after pieces. Bridge and Root is really just a segue for me to touch people. I'm a people person and I love helping and serving my community, and this is just an opportunity for me to do that. So thank you all so much.
Congratulations. We're very excited for the work that you're doing and this recognition. When I saw on Facebook that you had, social media, that you received this recognition over this period of time, it says a lot about you and how you've invested into your dream. And so I think that my counselors and I would all say, we're happy to have been a part of that and to seeing the city's support. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Mayor?
I want to thank your colleague, Dr. Daryl O'Quinn, for his acknowledgement and recognizing this small business owner today. I want to also congratulate her publicly, and it's great to see the state acknowledge your hard work as an entrepreneur and a small business owner that takes risks every day and acknowledge all the ups and downs of what comes with that. Madam President and Counsel, I'm glad to be one of those 1,600 customers. So I'll continue supporting and wearing her brand. And everybody support Bridge and Root.
I was gonna say, you've got a great influencer there, so thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. O'Quinn, for bringing her to us. Thank you. All right, counselors, at this time, we will devote our attention to the items that are considered for consent. Mr. Clerk, would you read those items?
Yes, ma'am. Consent starts on page two with items three and four. Page three, item five, is on consent. Page 15, items eight and nine are on consent. Item eight was recommended by Budget and Finance Committee. And I got the breakdown for the item nine, Opera Fund Designation. District five is $100,000, and for District eight is $250,000 to amount to the $350,000 put forward today. On page 16, we pick back up with the consent agenda with items 10, 11, and 12. Page 17, we have items 13, 14, and 15 on consent. Item 13 was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page 18, we have items 16, 17, and 18 on consent. Page 19, we have items 19, 20, 21, and 22 on consent. Page 20, we have items 23, 24, 25, and 26 on consent. And we conclude with items 27, 28, and 29 on page 21.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any items that you would like to have added or removed? Counselor Williams? What page is that, Counselor? Thank you. Right. Item number 16 on page 18, there's a request to remove from consent. Any other items?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Madam Proton?
If we can remove item 12, I actually talked to administration about withdrawing the item, but I'll just delay it.
President?
Yes, Chief?
We request a withdrawal of number 12.
There's a request to withdraw item number 12. Thank you. Any other items? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation that are indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I can entertain a motion and second for the items considered for consent.
I move approval.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. If you had any item that was listed as consent, that item has been approved. Hope you have a great day and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. Mr. Clerk, first item?
It should be item one, an ordinance authorized the Chief of Police of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, to enter and execute an agreement for one year, the term beginning October the 1st, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, between the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, Aleah, and the City of Birmingham, for the Birmingham Police Department, participation in the Alabama Drug Enforcement Task Force, ADETF, and for the distribution and receipt of funds and property forfeited as a result of investigations by ADETF. Now, this is the second reading.
All right, counselors, this is an ordinance that brings forth again the one year with the term beginning the City of Birmingham and Aleah. Any questions regarding the item? We ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item number one passes. Thank you. Next item?
Item two, an ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2023-7, to change zone district boundaries from MXD Plan Mixed Use District to Q1 Qualified Light Manufacturing District filed by C. Madam Randall Minor, applicant, and representing the owner of the City of Birmingham for property located at 705 Tom Martin Drive in 801 Lake Shore Parkway and situated in the southeast quarter of Section 28 Township 18 South Range 3 West in the hearing of all ownership parties. Second reading.
Thank you. Counselors, I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to our planning.
I move.
We got a motion first. Second. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'll turn this over to Counselor Abbott. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gambrell, would you read our case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Tim Gambrell, I serve as the chief planner for the City of Birmingham, and this is case ZAC 2023-7 in the Oxmoor Neighborhood. The proposed use is an approximate 30,000 to 40,000 square foot corporate headquarters building and an approximate 30,000 square foot distribution office building on approximately five acres of fenced out, oh, I'm sorry, and approximately five acres of fenced outdoor storage and accessory parking for Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company. This is an application on behalf of CPSAL LLC to rezone approximately 28.33 acres located on the south side of Lake Shore Parkway from an existing MXD Plan Mixed Use District to I-1 Light Manufacturing District to facilitate the construction and development for the benefit of Consolidated Pipe and Supply. They intend to operate on that site from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday. The developer contemplated the project will be accessed from a single curb cut on the west side of Tom Martin Drive, more than 500 feet south of Lake Shore Parkway. All truck traffic exiting the project will be routed to make a left onto Tom Martin Drive away from Winona-Oxmoor Road. Expected daily traffic includes employees, three tractor trailers, and nine local short flatbeds. In the immediate vicinity of the subject property, all the residentially zoned parcels are located and accessed primarily from Winona-Oxmoor Road, except for a 429-unit Lake Shore Ridge apartment, which is immediately to the west of the subject property and has access directly from Lake Shore Parkway. As can be seen in the materials accompanying the application, the project will maintain a minimum undisturbed area of 50 feet along its lot lines that abut residential zoned parcels, and due to such buffer in the topography, the project will be shielded by natural buffers from all nearby residential uses. The subject property is located in Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood, has over 1,100 feet of frontage on the south side of Lake Shore Parkway, and 700 feet of frontage on the west side of Tom Martin Drive. The subject property is currently comprised of two separate tax parcels, which will be resurveyed and combined into a single parcel in connection with the proposed development. The property to the north across Lake Shore Parkway is zoned CI1, which is a contingency light manufacturing district, and office building and warehouse are located on that property. Property to the west contains the Lake Shore Ridge Apartments, zoned MXD. Properties to the south include Oxmoor Village Subdivision, Evonik Industries, and undeveloped land, all zoned MXD. Property to the east is also undeveloped land, zoned MXD. The long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low and light industrial. Their parking plan shows that they would have 126 parking spaces, or I'm sorry, 126 parking spaces are what is required. Their site plan shows 140 parking spaces, and therefore the applicant will have to either install 14 of those spaces as pervious paving or use other LIV techniques on site, subject to approval by the Stormwater Division. The conceptual plan appears to meet requirements for landscaping, however, a more detailed landscaping plan will be required for permitting. This proposal, and for Stormwater, the proposed development will need to have a pre-concept meeting with Stormwater staff. The plans provided show a tremendous increase in pervious area, so discussions will be needed to discuss the provisions that are being taken to control Stormwater per provided sketches. The area south of development may be partially protected, but there is potential for impact on the apartment complex to the west. And likewise, the City of Birmingham Soil Erosion Control Permit, Civil Construction Permit, Stormwater Permit, all will be required. A more detailed site plan showing proposed driveways, ingress and egress to the site will be required for permitting and will be required to be approved by Planning, Engineering Permits, Department of Transportation, as well as the city engineer. The Oxmoor Neighborhood Association met at its regular scheduled meeting on June 12, 2023, to review the proposed project and voted to support the request with a vote of 16 yes and 4 no. The framework plan, Southwest Area Framework Plan Implementation Committee met on July 25, 2023, to review the proposed zoning case. The committee voted 5-0 to recommend approval. The ZAC, or Zoning Advisory Committee, met at its regular scheduled meeting on July 18, 2023, and voted 4-0 to recommend approval. They did recommend two Q conditions. One was to, the proposed development shall comply with the Oxmoor Design Guidelines and be approved by the Oxmoor Steering Committee, and a 50-foot undisturbed buffer shall remain along the west and south property lines as shown on their conceptual plan adjacent to residential uses. The Planning and Zoning Committee met on August 9, 2023, and voted to recommend approval of the zoning request with the same Q conditions. And those two Q conditions are included in the ordinance today. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative or both here?
We are. Randall Minor, 1901 Sixth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama. Here representing the applicant, which is an LLC, CPSAL, Roman numeral I, I-1 LLC, and which is an affiliate of Consolidated Pipe. And here with me today, I have the CFO of Consolidated Pipe, Mr. Barry Howden. He's really, he's CFO, but he's really also the developer on this. So any, any kind of detailed questions you guys may have, we can defer to him. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that I can just kind of walk through, just so you guys have an idea of where the property is. And I also have a video that shows, and we met, and I'll just kind of back up a little bit. Barry will talk about this in more detail, but Consolidated Pipe has been part of this community for a long time, and in making the decision to relocate, they wanted to be in the City of Birmingham. They had outgrown their space on Birmingham Southern's campus, but really wanted to be in nature and really wanted to be in. It's actually owned by the City of Birmingham, so it's actually under contract with the City of Birmingham now. We hope to close, assuming this rezoning is successful within the next three to four weeks. So the property itself, if you can click to the next slide, as Mr. Gambrell is saying, is Tom Martin Drive and Lake Shore. You really kind of miss it when you drive by this area, because it's, the topography is such that all you see is the trees that align Lake Shore. If you look at this picture that we have up today, you can see the north side of Oxmoor Village Subdivision. So that's the closest residential area other than the apartments on Lake Shore. But that, that back part of Oxmoor Village is really the top of the ridge in this area. So the development plan is really building on the other side of the ridge from Oxmoor Village and from, really from Evonik as well. If you can go to the next slide? Thanks. So this is just going through the things that Mr. Gambrell already touched on. You know, it's a large site, you know, it's almost 28 acres, but because of that topography, only about half of that is actually developable. We looked at, in consultation with the neighborhood, we looked at just different places that we could access this property. You know, the goal obviously being to minimize the disruption from a traffic standpoint on the neighborhood. So we looked at trying to access from Lake Shore and then also from Tom Martin Drive. And the conclusion was that Tom Martin Drive was the best option for the development, you know, meaning it was, A, most feasible, B, would preserve the most, the maximum amount of natural undisturbed area. If we looked seriously at, and like I said, Mr. Howden can go into some more detail, we looked seriously at trying to access from Lake Shore. As you guys know, that if you've driven over there, there's very strong medians, and there's a difficult process to get median cuts. So really, if we had to access from Lake Shore, it would be a right-in only. You'd have to exit, you know, right out. You know, you wouldn't be able to cut across the median and make a left turn, you know, kind of coming out on the Lake Shore left. And essentially, and I'm, you know, obviously I'm a lawyer, so I'm not an engineer, but you know, in my lawyer explanation of it, they would have to cut down most of that side along the Lake Shore and have a very steep drive. So you would lose that tree cover and have a very steep drive, you know, which if these are, you know, some of these are going to be trucks coming in, you know, that's probably not the ideal situation. not the ideal situation. So if you can go to the next slide. So this is, it's harder to see in here, but this is the topography plan, and it kind of shows you, you know, just the, the movement of the earth in this area. And here, I've got some other slides, but I'm going to stop it here and just go to a video, because I think that gives the best impression of what this development, once developed, will look like to the adjacent uses. So if you can pull up the video, thanks. And while that's pulling up, I'll just say, so we've met with the, we've been meeting with the neighborhood for over a year on this project, and we've met with, you know, neighborhood leadership, obviously with Green, and she's here today. Okay, thanks. We, Ms. Green, and at least three or four times, you know, as we were kind of going. Which require an additional development plan approval. So even if, you know, you guys vote to rezone this today, we can't develop anything until the Oxmoor Steering Committee has approved it. And, you know, one of the things that, when we were meeting with PEP staff in the fall about just the guidelines and what that meant for the development, you know, things like material, building material, you know, we can't just put up any kind of building over here. It has to be a high-quality building. And I've got a photo of that in our thing. And. Kind of see. Goal is for this to show what this, the built condition is going to look like. And you, you can kind of see it here, but there's a minimum fifty-foot buffer. That's a zoning requirement. I think at our closest point, you know, looking at it in the most conservative way, we're seventy feet at the closest point of undisturbed buffer. This is the, the Lake Shore Ridge Apartments that are off of Lake Shore. You can see that the development site is not visible at all. And this is coming Lake Shore, driving east towards I-65, and it's going to make a right turn at the Tom Martin here. But again, you know, the building's not visible, and that's kind of the intent of the ownership group. They don't want this to be something, you know, a distraction from the nature. And you can see parts of the building here, kind of similar to along two eighty. If you go. So this is the Tom. They haven't engineered the. But this is kind of conceptually how it's going to go. All right, so, and you. Talk about three. Development. So the first thing. Corporate leadership for Consolidated Pipe, along with, I think your, the IT group is going to be there and some other individuals. And then the next thing you'll see is there's a, and I'll let Barry kind of describe what it is, but it's, it's the showroom, is how I think about it. And then in the back, there's a lay-down area. So with that, I think y'all just need to hear more about the company and kind of what they do. That's more interesting, probably. So Barry, if you want to come up and just talk about, you know, why you picked this site and the same thing you've been telling other folks.
Madam President, I know some of you guys have heard this explanation, and pardon me if it's redundant, but yeah, we're, we're pretty excited that we found a place that potentially could be the home of our new corporate office and a Birmingham Industrial Utility Distribution Center. As Randall mentioned, we're a legacy Birmingham company, been in Birmingham since July of nineteen sixty, and wanted desperately to stay in Birmingham and to hub our, our really national office out of Birmingham. We have seventy locations around the United States, but we were really committed to staying in Birmingham and really had been looking for about two years, couldn't find a location. And then one day, I happened upon that, just riding around, looking, found that site with all the, it was a pretty good-sized parcels and wooded area like we were looking for. So anyway, we began to pursue that possibility there and, as opposed to having to leave the city, and we're pretty excited at the potential there. So anyway, we had three goals when we were looking to stay in Birmingham. One was that we, we have operations in Enslie, and we needed to stay close to those operations. It was very, very important. And we also wanted to get our distribution center in close proximity to our sales office. Our other seventy locations have distribution and sales joined together, but the offices in that same facility, and we found a great synergy there in doing that. And, and then just really and truly being committed to hubbing out of the very center of Birmingham if we could. So that's why we began to pursue this, and it's, it's had a lot of obstacles there, mainly being the mountain that runs down the center of that, which is, I suppose, why that, those two parcels were still even available, because there's such a, I don't know if you've ever turned up Tom Martin Drive and looked to your right, but you are looking up a mountain there, and it's going to be very, very costly to cut down that mountain enough to get fourteen usable acres in there and, and leaving the surrounding area undisturbed with all the trees and all the nature. And our office currently is on the campus of Birmingham Southern College by the football stadium. You've probably never seen us, if you've ever been on that campus and been to that football stadium or the softball field or the tennis courts, you've probably never noticed our office sitting up in there, but it's kind of hidden into the hills there in the natural area of all the trees, and that's what we were looking for. You know, outside of our customers, we really try to stay low-profile and kind of stay out of the way and just do what we do, providing water, sewer, and gas materials for subdivisions and commercial developments all over the United States. So pretty excited at this potential, that we get to hopefully find, find a solution to our growth. And primarily, the reason we're having to move is we have just grown so much. And we, we had an office that was designed for sixty people, and we have about a hundred in there right now. And, and it's primarily professionals in that building, but then also to get our distribution center close proximity to our sales team. So I may have rambled a little bit. I don't know if I have any questions you guys may have that I could try to answer on this. One more thing I did, one more point I did want to make. We are doing a ten-thirty-one exchange on this, so instead of seeing Consolidated Pipe on the contract, you're seeing CPS AL-1 on there, just because we're exchanging some properties to help us a little bit on the tax edge of that. So anyway.
Any members of the council who have questions or would like to speak? Let's see, Hunter Williams, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted, you know, I've gotten the, the pleasure to see the presentation, didn't get to see that in-depth aerial drive up the driveway. Thank you, Randall. But got, got to see it for the sale of the property, which is obviously the cities that are selling to you guys as part of that ten-thirty-one, but, and part of this overall project. But just wanted to thank you, Barry, and y'all, the ownership of Consolidated Pipe as well, for staying in the City of Birmingham. I know when you're looking for a, a wooded, several-acre site, that there's a lot of options outside of the City of Birmingham that you guys could have chosen, and so thank you very much for willing to keep your business inside the city. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Dr. Aquin?
I think Hunter Williams just said exactly what I wanted to say. You know, it's, it's not lost on me that, you know, when you have this sort of transition in your company, that there's a lot of options available to you. And I, I want to say on behalf of, you know, this council and I'm sure everyone else in city government, that we truly appreciate you guys deciding to stay in the City of Birmingham. That's, means a lot to us.
Well, I want to just congratulate you on getting the Oxmoor neighborhood to vote favorably for your project. No slight intended, but they really oppose a lot of development in this area. So that says a lot about, you know, your intentionality to get the support of the neighborhood. So I was just curious on the plan, you know, there are some nice, neat little bundles on that lay-down yard area. What will it be pipe? You'll be storing pipe on the site?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be primarily PVC pipe and polyethylene pipe that's used for water, sewer, and gas.
Okay.
It's primarily, there'll be a few fittings out there. And as Randall mentioned, we're continuing to work with the developers on that. The, the very closest we would be to any of the property lines, to any of the surrounding residents, would be about eighty feet, even though the requirements fifty were further back than that, and in most cases, we're significantly back. And we're still working on how to get further back. And again, we will leave everything undisturbed in there. And, and we also take it very seriously to be a good neighbor over there and, and to be a good member of that community. So we have attended a number of the meetings even prior to the vote, trying to understand better what's important to the community there. And, and we have heard them, and even last Thursday night with the Oxmoor Village community meeting that we had, we're, we're listening to all their comments, and, and we're, we've gone back to civil, we've gone back to architects and designers on this thing, and working with even a, a different, a little bit different strategy to be sure that we address the lighting and, and stormwater and all that stuff. So I told them at the meeting last Thursday night, I said, "I know y'all don't know me from Adam, and you don't, probably don't even know our company." And, and so this is just words to you, but it's words that we're going to stand behind. We will be a good neighbor. We will help that community in other areas, and, and we will listen and take to heart whatever your concerns are, and we will address them. And so, and we sincerely mean that. That's, the Kerr family owns Consolidated Pipe, and that's who they are. This is third generation running this company, and they're not all about profits. Yes, they need to make a profit, but they're not all about profits. They're really about having fun, being a vital member of the community, and being profitable to give a return on investment to the shareholders of the company as well, which is their family.
I have one more question. You did coexist very peaceably on the Birmingham Southern campus with their operation. Are you doing anything else at this location or consolidating? You know, as you get more space and can expand in this location, are there other things you're bringing to that site that were not a part of the Birmingham Southern location?
Yeah, that's a great question, and thank you for asking that. The office on the campus at Birmingham Southern is strictly a, a corporate office that's got all the leadership of the company, as well as sales offices and finance and credit and IT are housed in that office. And, and so we have donated that building to Birmingham Southern. We have been very actively involved with President Coleman over there, trying to help them raise money to help them with their situation. Our, our building appraised at two and a half million. We donated that to them in December and began paying them rent in January, and, and also have pledged to help them in their fundraising effort. But then our distribution center is, is at the Enslie Yard, and when they move to this new location, we're going in there with a completely new operation for us. We're going to be working with spools for water treatment inside that building, so that should generate at least another twenty jobs new to our company, new to, to the city in that facility, and, and maybe even more than that in the, in the years to come. So yeah, we're going to add some additional business to our company that we're currently having to outsource.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Madam President?
Thank you. I do want to echo the sentiments of the councilors in just talking about your diligence and wanting to be a great community partner. And whenever you bring a new company into a neighborhood, it's always important that the neighbors feel that any new company that's going to come in will be a neighbor and a good neighbor. I also want to acknowledge the presence of the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood, Neighborhood President, Association President, Mrs. Green, and any of her neighbors. And coming to neighborhoods, you really need to work in the neighborhood and look at what they want for the area. And so just looking at some of the conditions that you've worked out with them. Landscaping and things like that, that's most appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I would like to say, I would like to thank you, because this is the most first-class presentation that we have, that I have ever seen, and I've been here a long time. Y'all have really outdone yourselves with this presentation, so I thank both of you. But I did also want to say that, you know, we talk about win-win situations. Well, this is a win-win-win-win, because your company benefits, Birmingham benefits, the neighborhood benefits, and Birmingham Southern benefits. So this is like you get the gold star for having the most wins. But I also wanted to ask, on these photographs or depictions of your building, it looks like you have a lot of grass to cut. And I was going to suggest to you that you might want to cut even less trees than you were planning, because cutting grass is, it's not good for the environment and it's very expensive. And the more trees you have, the less grass you have. Or you could plant native plants, and they would just grow, and you wouldn't have to mow them.
That's right. I agree with that. The architects sometimes take some freedoms when they're designing or putting these drone images together. If you came to our campus at Birmingham Southern, you'd see just a little tini bit of grass and lots of trees. In fact, the senior owners of our company, they are always planting trees. You know, those Japanese maples, and, and they're so proud, and they have us out there watering them. I've even watered them, you know, for them on a regular basis. So they love trees, they love all that natural area, so we will have probably a lot more than that image showed.
Well, good. I love trees too, so I want to come out and see your trees sometimes.
Yes, ma'am, please do.
But thank you very much. We have a motion, and Madam President, no more speakers, so. Oh, oh, are there any members of the public who would like to come speak? I'm sorry. Well, come on up. Just state your name, and you have three minutes to tell us what you want to tell us.
Hi, I'm Marsha Ward. Live in Oxmoor Valley, which is the closest neighborhood to this proposed building. And I'm encouraged by what I've heard today, but I am concerned, number one, the lighting is an issue, but they say they're going to address that. The other thing is the buffer. Really, I live in an ideal neighborhood. It's small. I, I was one of the first houses built there, so I've been there four years now. And it's all types of people, all walks of life, and, and we're all very friendly, so it's just an unusual neighborhood. And it's. And it's quiet, and it's dark at night, except for our lighting. And I would like it to stay that way. Our property values are going up, and I don't know with the current interest rates, how that's doing, but they have been increasing, and I don't want anything to affect our property values. Noise is the other concern I have, and that's why I'd like more of a buffer. I understand the topography is tough up there, but, and construction is going to be, you know, quite noisy, because I'm sure there will be blasting and all kinds of things. I work from home during telehealth, so that would be a problem for me, but I'm sure that can't be avoided. But ongoing, those two things, lighting and noise, are my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, good morning, Council.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Kayla Regis. I am coming on behalf of Oxmoor Village as well, as my neighbor that spoke before. I really appreciate the sincerity, as well as the professionalism in your diligence in meeting with us last Thursday. However, from what we have discussed, I know that there was a vote with the Oxmoor Association, but Oxmoor Village, unfortunately, some of our neighbors did not have the opportunity to participate in that vote. Oxmoor Village is the neighborhood that is going to be directly affected, as you can see from his visuals, one of the neighbors, as the buffers are sitting right behind a line of eight of my neighbors' homes. We have a lot of concerns as Oxmoor Village, and unfortunately, obviously, it's now here September, and so, this is our first time being able to come before you, as we had a change of HOA board. And so, again, we were not able to participate. I am requesting an additional meeting with the company for our HOA community for Oxmoor Village, because we do have concerns as a neighborhood, and they are very valid. And so, I mean, I have concerns about construction, some of our neighbors have concerns about debris, the peace, the traffic, several things that Oxmoor Village neighbors and community members are very concerned with. We have expressed to the company that it's not a matter of you all putting your company there. I mean, there are several there, T-Mobile's there, there are several there, that's not the issue. The issue is the concerns and how it's going to directly affect us as a community, and all of the things that we have identified. And we just want to have uninterrupted time to share those thoughts before this continues to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I wanted to, I don't mean it takes so long, I have three minutes. Oh, gosh, did it start at three minutes? It didn't start at three. Take it out. Okay, it's a pleasure to be before you all again on this topic in terms of this project that is before you. In reference to what one of our neighbors just said from Oxmoor Village, we constantly, we have put the neighborhood meetings on next door. We have a new Facebook that we've had out for four months, and we also have a giant sign, about this tall, this wide, that we've been putting out for the past six years. And Oxmoor Village has to pass by the community center in order to be able to go where they're going, and go either way, but most traffic comes by the community center, by them being next door. So, we have, people have always known about the meetings. I sent it to the president of the subdivisions, so just to address that. Okay, but anyway, this project came to me, former Mayor Bill had asked me to meet with the company, and that was highly unusual. And so, we did, I did. And so, for the past year or so, we've been talking and talking, and then they were listening and listening. And so, we finally came to this conclusion that they would be an asset instead of a hindrance to our community. And we take that into account, you know, we try our best to see what can they bring to the table each and every time a company comes to us. And if they can't bring anything to the table, and that's going to benefit us, then it's more than likely, it's out, they're just out there to make money, of course, but this particular company, they came to us, and they wanted to do a more of a fact-finding thing, and we really appreciated that. You know, we've never had a company to come to us and just want to know just exactly how y'all feel about it. Okay, Oxmoor Village had the opportunity, and as a matter of fact, Oxmoor Village, we haven't had any representation, but two persons from Oxmoor Village in the past five or six years since they've been there, just to give you an idea, they really don't come to the meetings. And so, but this came up, and what we ended up doing was, one of the neighbors in Oxmoor Village that I know very well, she called me, and she was asking some questions. And so, I said, "Well, let's just go ahead and get Consolidated Pipe to come and meet with you all." So, that's where we met last Thursday, we had a meeting with just Oxmoor Village. And so, they had an opportunity to ask questions. There were only ten in attendance out of sixty something homes over there, so, just to give you an idea. Okay, so by them coming to us, Consolidated Pipe came the second time, and that's when we voted. So, everyone had an opportunity to come to any meetings, and we don't designate, we don't put out there that this meeting is about this, or this meeting is about that. We just put the sign out there, put it on next door, and then, you know, and then we have the Facebook. But nevertheless, I just want to read this briefly to you all, quickly to you all. This is something that has been read to each of the committees that they have gone through Consolidated Pipe. And so, when we sent it out, when we sent our total in, we had several things, and I just want to say that for the neighbors that are here, that we did do a lot of questioning. And so, we came up with, this is what we sent to PEP, okay, just reiterating what they said. And the reason I want to read this very quickly is because this is very important. This is, this was not mentioned today, but it's been mentioned.
Motion to suspend the rules to add two minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'll make it real quick. Thank you so much. Okay, we submitted that what they said, based on what they're doing.
Hold on, Ms. Green, let's just do some procedural work here. We've had a motion to allow you to continue to speak for another two minutes.
Okay.
Be known by saying aye? All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Green.
Okay. What we submitted were eleven items, based on what they said they were going to do. There will only be one entrance, Tom Mart, and Lake Shore Parkway, and all trucks employees will use the entrance, the entrance and exit. The design will curve, making sure that they cannot go onto Winona-Oxmoor Road in any way or any form, okay? Because we value that, because we have over seven hundred residents on that road, Winona-Oxmoor Road. So, we said, and then they told us the operation was from seven to five, many of fighting. We re-submitted that as what we want them to continue to do. They're limiting to five to twelve trucks daily. There will be no increase of material on the, other than personnel, they will increase the personnel, but not material out there, okay? No noise from loading of material that will exist. We want to, they want to be a good neighbor, which is valuable, very valuable, because we have companies coming in, they just want to put everything there and just walk off. But they have been in a, you know, talking with us, we submitted them a list of our wants, and so, that's good, okay? We have, the visual presentation that they did on behalf of the neighborhood was awesome. The buffer, and they didn't have to do that, they decided to do that. Okay, the buffer trees surrounding the property, the good buffer of trees surrounding the property, Barry and I have talked about increasing that, and as he said, seventy feet, I'm seeing five hundred. I know that sounds ridiculous, but, you know, I want more of a buffer from the neighborhood subdivision, okay? The showing of the different types of trucks was shown, and we like that, and the last thing is Consolidated Pipe must not deviate or alter anything that we have discussed, you know, that they came to us with. And so, I just wanted to read that to you, because we did submit that when we submitted it out of vote. And so, yes, we try to include everybody, we have all the names, we have nine subdivisions, and we are, the nine subdivisions are always, eight are represented. So, I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Before you go, can you state your full name and your position for the record?
Okay, Madeline Green. I have the esteemed pleasure of being the president of Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association. My address is 108 Minnick Circle, Birmingham, Alabama, 35211.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers? Madam President, now, we are ready to vote.
Thank you very much. I believe all councilors have had an opportunity to speak. We're ready for the vote.
Excuse me. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Thank you very much. Item number two passes. Next item?
Should be item number six, it's on page fourteen. An ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars to execute a quitclaim deed to L7 Strategies Doing Business as Joe Homebuyer for the sale of property legally described as south, one hundred and forty feet, Lot 3, Constance RME subdivision, map seven, page sixty-three, in the office of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama, partial ID twenty-two zero twenty-six one sixteen forty, city account fifty-seven sixty, and located at twenty-twenty, Fourteenth Avenue North, Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement liens, in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham, Alabama. So, item of permanent operation, I need you to see to pass today.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Protem Smithman.
Aye.
Council President Alexander.
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
All right, councilors, before you, is an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment to execute a quitclaim deed with the company that's listed. Any questions, information needed? We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Thank you. Item number six passes. Next item?
Should be item number seven. An ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of six thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-two cents to execute a quitclaim deed with Jessica Johnson for the sale of property legally described as block twenty-one F, Lot seven through ten, Enslie, four, three, map book four, page three, in the office of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama, partial ID twenty-two zero thirty-one three forty-six three, city account sixty-four eleven, and located at twenty-one nineteen Avenue F, Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement liens, in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Same, this item is item of permanent operation, I need you to see to pass today.
I move for unanimous consent.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
President Protem Smithman.
Aye.
Council President Alexander.
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
A move approval.
Item is before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. This item is an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment to execute a quitclaim deed with Jessica Johnson. Any questions regarding this item? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Thank you. Item number seven passes. Next item?
Should be item twelve, which has been withdrawn, and then after that, should be item sixteen, which is on page eighteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as are appropriate and necessary in to spend the grant funds on behalf of the city for a goods, jobs, challenges, grant, sub-recipient agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama for the University of Alabama at Birmingham, for a term of twelve months, under which the city will provide funding to the Board of Trustees of the University of Alabama for the University of Alabama at Birmingham in the amount not to see five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and three hundred and seventy-five dollars from a grant received by the city from the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration to carry out workforce development activities. Motion, please.
A move approval.
All right, councilors, this item was moved for consent. Are there any questions regarding this item? All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Please, Ms. Clark, will you please note my abstention?
Okay, Councilor Williams Staines, thank you.
All right, councilors, that item passes. Thank you. Next item?
I think that concludes the agenda items, except for the UC items mentioned to you earlier, council.
Councilors, you do have before you, you have requests for four items of travel.
And they're all under the same category, so they can all be one resolution, Madam President.
So, we'll entertain a motion in a second for approval.
A move approval.
All right, this is for UC?
Motion for UC, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
President, I try to stay ready. Gets a little harder as you get. All right, so, few announcements. First, the Northeast YMCA, we're having a groundbreaking today, or the YMCA of Greater Birmingham will be having a groundbreaking today at the Northeast YMCA site. This is the first phase of their robot YMCA revitalization, revitalization project. PM, also, Jeff State Community College will be breaking ground. Asian Center on Friday, September twenty-ninth, at ten thirty AM. A couple of impactful projects going on in the area. Our be litter free mission continues this Saturday, will be September thirtieth, will be continuing to celebrate Katie Fagan, who is with Black Warrior Riverkeeper, as she is preparing to move. But did just kind of want to share some stats, since she joined us in our project back in September first of twenty twenty, we've done seventy-nine cleanups in Birmingham. There's been nine hundred and sixty-five individual volunteers at those cleanups, seventeen hundred and twenty-seven point five hours of basically volunteer hours, and if we were to multiply that by the current federal volunteer rate, that is thirty-one dollars and eighty cents per hour, so that is a fifty-five thousand dollar impact to go along with forty-eight thousand pounds of litter removed. And so, shout out to Katie, she really helped us get a lot more efficient with what we were doing, and so, we'll miss you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. We want to make these few announcements, Madam President. We're having our next meeting for the Second Annual State of the District on Wednesday, and that will be at the Cross Flex from six to eight PM. We had Northside last night at Protected, which was from six to eight, so, just updating on about Capitol Projects, Opera update, district briefing, neighborhood projects, and so forth, healthy housing initiative and so forth. So, we want to thank the mayor's administration for coming out, Captain Hanks for coming out giving updates as well. Also, join myself and Council Protem, a night to remember, and it's on October the eighth, at five PM, at the Legion Field Bus Parking Lot. We will have for our Safe Summer Series concert, local artist Young Vocal, who will be opening up for national recording artist Stokely. Also, to conclude, Madam President, we'll be getting ready for our Second Annual Sneaker Saree, myself and Council Protem has partnered with me on this, Let's Talk Peace, Healing, and Public Safety, so this is in continuing engaging our youth around public safety and talking-
and, and talking peace and healing for, for the city of Birmingham. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam President, one more thing. Um, this Saturday, the Inner Ridge Neighborhood is also in partnership with District 9, they're doing an alley cleanup. Um, that's Ms. Adrian Reynolds, um, and the Inner Ridge, uh, Neighborhood Association.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Crestline Neighborhood, uh, it was, uh, canceled for this Thursday, the twenty-eighth, and they will resume back in October. And then Economic Development Tourism will be meeting, uh, October the third, which is actually this upcoming Tuesday. And please have your submissions to indiabailey@india.bailey@birminghamal.gov by this Thursday, which is September the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM in the Fountain Heights Recreation Center located at eleven oh one Fifteenth Avenue North. Uh, Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will also meet tonight at six thirty PM at Girls Inc., located at fifty-one thirty Eighth Court South. Uh, also happening tonight is a Smithfield Choice Neighborhood, uh, Community Meeting. Residents of the Smithfield community are invited to attend a community meeting to get an update and ask questions about the Choice Neighborhood Grant. This meeting will take place tonight at six PM at the Smithfield Recreation Center located at one fifty Reverend Abraham Woods Jr. Boulevard. Uh, unfortunately, I won't be able to be at any of those neighborhood meetings or the Smithfield Choice Neighborhood Meeting because Council President and Counselor Woods and I are, have been invited to be on a panel for the International Community Manager, City Managers Association. Um, so, uh, y'all have fun without us. Um, also, uh, tomorrow, residents of the Northside Community, which, uh, the neighborhoods of Central City, Fountain Heights, Druid Hills, Evergreen, and Norwood, uh, are invited to attend the Northside Community Framework Plan Public Meeting that's happening tomorrow night, six PM at the Protective Stadium, uh, Club Level, uh, Entrance. Um, that's located at the intersection of Twenty-Second Street North and Eleventh Avenue North. Um, so these, for folks that, uh, may not be aware, these framework plans are, um, basically neighborhood level deep dives of the city's, uh, comprehensive plan, and they're, serve as guiding documents for polyma, policymakers such as ourselves, um, when considering, uh, projects, uh, in those neighborhoods. So they're, they're very important, and thus, you know, it's very important for residents to be involved and participating in those conversations. And then finally, just want to remind folks that the Eastlake Farmers Market will take place Saturday, uh, until October fourteenth, from eight AM to noon at Eastlake United Methodist Church located at seventy-seven fifty-three First Avenue South. There's a lot of fresh produce, uh, live music, and, and other appetit, activities that happen there, so please go check it out. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, first thing I want to say before I forget is for residents of House District Fifty-Five, there is an election today.
You voted in.
And please go vote. We don't want to have the lowest voter turnout ever, but, you know, it always, when you have one of these special elections, it's always a fear. Um, the next Planning and Zoning Committee is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, seventh at three thirty PM in Conference Room A. Tonight, we have the Redmont Neighborhood Association meeting. It will not be at the Botanical Gardens due to antiques in the gardens. It will be at the Associated Builders and Contractors Building at eighteen thirty, Twenty-Eighth Avenue South in Homewood. So, uh, there are two important issues, one a variance request and another, uh, revelation of the Twenty-First Avenue Mostly Complete Streets Project. So, um, we want people to go to the right location. Um, next Monday at six thirty, the Glen Iris Neighborhood Association meets at Saint Elias Maronite Catholic Church. Um, it is a hybrid meeting. You can attend in person or you can participate via Zoom. Um, I encourage everybody every week to call three one one or to download the app. Um, I'm still encouraging that. It is, um, very useful to be able to add photographs to every complaint you make so that there are no concerns about people not being able to find what you're complaining about. And, uh, residents of District Three who want to hear all of the other things that are going on, uh, please go to www.bhamdistrictthree.com. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by echoing, uh, what Counselor Abbott said about House District Fifty-Five. Uh, many residents of District Eight are represented by this House District seat, so today is the day to go out and vote. Uh, also, the Bush Hills Neighborhood Meeting, um, which would have been tonight, is canceled. So please note that that meeting is canceled. Um, the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District and the City of Birmingham's Community Development Department are presenting a Community Revitalization Update for College Hills, Graymont, and Smithfield Neighborhoods. Uh, that's going to take place tonight, starting, uh, at six PM in the Press Box at Legion Field. Uh, this is going to be a discussion about community development phases, economic impact opportunities, and low-income home preservation. Uh, this is related to, uh, the recent Choice Neighborhood Award. I'm looking at Counselor O'Quinn. That's your understanding, right? Okay. And also, please note that the next Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Committee Meeting will take place on Monday, October ninth, at three PM in Conference Room A. So this is a little off-cycle from the regular scheduled meeting. Um, Monday, October ninth, at three PM. Also, on October seventh, which is a Saturday, from one to six thirty PM, District Eight will be hosting as part of the Safe Summer Series, uh, Blues at the Ballpark at Historic Rickwood Field. The lineup includes international acts like Nikki Hill and Jose Ramirez, Latin America's most popular blues artist, and of course, local legends, uh, to include a music maker review, which will feature Albert White, Elnora Spencer, Aretha Woodruff, District Eight's own Hurricane Elaine Hudson, Sugar Harp, and also, um, Ms., District Eight's own Ms. Johnny Nathan and the Jammers. So mark your calendars for this can't-miss event. Everything is free except for the food and beverage, which, uh, there will be food and beverage vendors on-site. And there is covered stadium seating available, but you can bring your folding chairs or rugs if you want to kind of sit on the grass. Also, remember that each Thursday, we meet up at Starbucks at the Crossplex at seven fifty-five AM to do about a one-and-a-half-mile loop around, um, the state, the, uh, area. And we walk with our partners from the Freshwater Land Trust and a lot of District Eight neighbors from across the district for just a little morning exercise and all kinds of conversation. So all paces are welcome. Uh, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Dr. Quinn?
Yes, I, I, uh, just wanted to take a few extra minutes, or not minutes, but a few extra seconds, um, to, to thank, uh, Mayor Woodfin and his team, and, and also you, my council colleagues, uh, for supporting the city's, uh, application for the FRA Consolidated Rail Infrastructure Safety Improvements Program. Um, uh, as was announced yesterday, the city received eight million dollars in funding, uh, that combined with one-and-a-half million dollars from Norfolk Southern and the City of Birmingham and City of Trussville's contribution, total ten million dollars towards a project that is going to be, uh, extremely impactful for the Woodlawn, Crestwood, uh, Gate City, Oak Ridge Park neighborhoods. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to you all. Um, I, you know, I've had the honor of being a frequent advocate for this project, um, but none of these ha, things happen in isolation. Um, it requires a lot of people agreeing to move in the same direction, and, uh, that's not lost on me, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. And I want to echo before I start any comments from the district, echo, uh, just the collaboration and the work that's done between the council and the mayor's team to, uh, get us out in front, to go and secure these grants. Thank you for your diligence and wanting to be sure that this project starts with Harris Homes. I think this part of the money is first for implementation and planning, correct, project planning. And so this is the beginning, but it really shows how, when we make these visits and have this opportunity to network, that we're able to tell our story and, uh, get the support for the things that we need here in the city of Birmingham. So thank you all very much. Appreciative of that. Here are the, um, announcements for District Seven. Do want to remind everyone that there's a free tutoring program that started at Wiggins Park. It continues now, and it's held on Wednesdays from five thirty PM to seven PM, and that's at the Wiggins Park Rec Center. So if you have any children that are needed in that tutoring, please, um, we have contact information where you can get more information to let them go over and get that tutoring. On Friday, September twenty-ninth, the Weenown and Dragons will play at home at the Bell Culpeper Stadium. They're four and one, and they'll be playing against Holt High School. There's no bulk trash pickup schedule for D seven this week, but if you have any issues, you need to call three one one. You can use the app, as Mrs. Abbott reminds us all the time, or you can call two oh five, two five four, two four eight nine. I continue to, to encourage you to use the app. It's so much, uh, more efficient. You get your pictures. You don't have to tell them and give descriptions. The pictures say a thousand words, and there's an immediate triage when you go into the app and where they try to determine what department needs to research and, and respond. And so just continue to use it. Hang on, it's working, it's getting better, but I really encourage you to use it. On Saturday, September thirtieth, we have a lot of things going on. Uh, the Industrial Center Neighborhood Association, they will meet and have a fun day, starting at eleven o'clock, and that'll be at twenty-eight hundred Wilson Road. The UAB Blazers, they do travel to New Orleans to place the Tulane Greenway, and we have the Twelfth Annual Brenda's Brown Bosoms Sister Strut. This starts from seven till eleven AM, September thirtieth, at Legion Field. This is a virtual as well as a live event this year, so you have no excuse. Anybody can either log on or meet us out there at Legion Field. And, um, also want to reiterate and just restate again that I'll be joining with Counselors O'Quinn and Counselor Woods, where we'll be at Heritage Hall, room one oh two, for a local government panel. This is from six to seven PM this evening. We're being joined by quite a number of local, um, uh, government leaders who will be discussing, they're asking us questions about our role in city government, why we chose this path, and so if you want to just hear some of that discussion, we hope that you will join us. I don't have any other items. Uh, now we will have our speakers list. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
First of all, good morning. This is the mayor's office, Wooden's office, and Council President Alexander and the City Council and all the citizens of Birmingham. I'm John Meehan. I am a resident now at thirty oh one Avenue D in Ensley. I just recently moved there. You know, I'm still staying in the same neighborhood because I got too much invested in Birmingham, and I love Birmingham. All right. I am the, uh, Chair of the Office of Advocacy and App, and Justice for the Passionist Community of Holy Family, Saint Mary's, uh, uh, and Saint Joseph, where two African-American parishes and one Latino parish. We, this coming next week, on October the fourth, we're going to have a green mass. We're going to celebrate the earth. We're honoring our patriot saint, Saint Francis of Assisi, but also we have extended it to honor groups, organizations that are out there trying to protect the environment, trying to protect the earth. And I do have some flyers here I'd like to pass out to everyone, to our, to let you know about it. It's going to be at Holy Family Catholic Church on October the fourth at six thirty PM, and we're going to have a reception afterwards. And we want to recognize those, uh, who have worked to protect our earth because we got to protect our communities. We got to protect our air we breathe. We got to protect environmental justice. We got to protect our rivers, our, our lakes and streams and rivers, the ones that we enjoy. And that's what we're trying to recognize what this mass is about. And I just wanted to let you know what is going on, and also, we're also involved, our office is also involved in trying to prevent gun violence. We're very encouraged that President Biden has set up an office to address gun violence. That is really needed, and I hope that the city here and all other communities and churches in Oregon, all throughout the country can address this issue. So that's what we're doing. I just wanted to let you know what's going on and, you know, to, because this is very important. This is very important work that I've done, and I have been doing this, I've been involved in advocacy work for over forty years of my life, and this is what, this is, this is my life's calling, and I want to do something to help our city. Anybody got any questions? I know this is in your district council, Counsel, uh, Clark, I did send information over, and to Councilwoman Tate, who I, who I know, who I live in your district, and by the way, I did vote today in District Fifty-Five. And I just want to let you know, we hope that y'all can come because we got a lot going on, and we're trying to involve people. We're trying to involve the youths and all to get, this is a diversity of people trying to work together to, to address our, our earth. Anything else?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Elizabeth Bev. Ricky Green.
Good morning, Council Madam President. My name is Ricky Green. My address, ten oh one Twenty Street South. Uh, not going to be before you long here, but I just have a concern of issue, and not just Birmingham, but all communities here, of concerning the violence here in Birmingham, uh, also the gun violence here. And I know that, um, we can't stop crime. There's no way possible, and it's going to happen. And these things happen, uh, they are random acts, most of them. Some of them targeted. But my thing is this, um, I want to know, like, what are we doing, or what kind of, what are we putting in place, uh, to tackle the issues in the area for, as, like I said before, uh, police presence, um, patrol and more, things of that nature. Because I was out in the neighborhood, I do outreach, and I was out over in the, uh, Eastlake area, and I was out there talking to the residents in the neighborhood, things of that matter. And some guy, uh, I don't know who it was, but someone had got the shooting, like, streak over from where I was at. And that's, and it was strange that it happened because I was talking to her, that lady over there, she's a retired school teacher, and she was saying how bad they shoot over there. And the police was called. And I was over there about two hours, and the cops never showed up. And it's the same on the South Side at Saint Andrew's Church where I serve at. We had an incident over here. A guy put out a knife on another guy. We called the cops. An hour and thirty minutes was response time. Why is it taking the police so long to get to the scene of a crime once they called? Now, I know that the police can't be everywhere at the same time. I know that. But we need to look into the response times of these cops when crimes are being committed, because if we can react in a good response time, because if every, if, if the police, when I was coming up in the community, the police was on patrol, and every time you turn around, they were, it was like a mass bus. Every time you turn around, you would see a cop car patrol. But now it's not like that. And all the time you see the cops, that's when they being called. And then it take an hour or two for them to get to the scene of the crime. So if it's taking so long for them to get to the scene of the crime, that's evident that they're off a beat. They're all beat. So we have to look into this to see if the response times and see why it's taking the officers so long to respond to these calls. And I want to, if I may, I know I'm out of time, forgive me. And if I may, say something to, address something that Counselor Tate has said, the last council meeting was some months ago when we was in the other building over there, and I had addressed the issue about the crime. And she said to me that the people, and it bothered me, and it still bothers me to this day. That's why I have to say something, because I never had a chance to address the comment. But she said, how can the people, the people can't rely on the police protection?
Mr. Green, you are out of time. I do appreciate you bringing your concerns to us. I do want to make you aware. Just last week, Mayor Woodfin did enact the Public Safety Advisory Committee. This committee's charge is to provide transparency and accountability, and they'll be doing independent assessments of things that are going on within the police department. As a concerned citizen, you will have an opportunity to voice the same type of concerns and issues to that committee. They've just started, they've just met, but, um, I'll be happy to give you more information or get someone from my staff to give you that information, but that will be an avenue that you'll be able to address these concerns. And so we're appreciative of the mayor of bringing, enacting that committee. Thank you very much. Next speaker. Counselor Tate?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Let me just, um, uh, say a comment to Mr. Green, but I, I don't remember telling you that the people could not rely on the police. What I've been saying, and what I will continue to say, is violence is up all across the country. You cannot police your way out of this. And what I have said, and what I will say here today, is I have worked with this council to champion a lot of initiatives. Hospital-Based Violence Intervention Program, Credible Messenger, uh, training that will be coming here. We will be glad to invite you to that training. When, uh, Mr. Clint Lacy come into Birmingham to do that training, which will put credible people in the streets of Birmingham into neighborhoods, to work in neighborhoods that people trust, and that are credible, the Aspen Institute Initiative. So it is a lot of initiatives moving around violence interruption. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Quinn?
Yes, um, so response times are, are something that, um, I've also heard from folks in my district as a, as a concern. So I believe we have the technology in place now to, um, capture that data. Is that correct, Chief Sparks? Um, so I, I would like to, uh, formally make a request, and I think my fellow counselors would be interested in also seeing this data, but, um, if we could, um, have perhaps, you know, the last six months of, um, particularly nine-one-one emergency calls and the, uh, correlating response time data, uh, very much, uh, like to see that.
Chief?
Ma'am, yes, ma'am, Madam President. Counselor O'Quinn will certainly follow up with the mayor on their request and follow back up with the council.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Williams, that you have a comment.
I'll just.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tammy Smith, seventeen oh eight, third, Third Avenue North. Of course, I, I'm always here asking about the situation with our roads, but you get the same answer all the time. Go on the website, you only listen. But it seem like that list are never going to arrive. Why do y'all neglect the Northside so much, but you find money for everything else in this town? You don't need no help ego stroking up there because y'all do a good job. But it is the poor or the condition that the Northside have stayed in. It don't give no, nothing changed over there, and every time you say something, you label it as a troublemaker. All you want is just the plan fair to be fair. Y'all go out and y'all had, the zeal y'all had with this Lake Shore project with, with Saturday, that was real easy. Everybody agreed on, they was all for it. Because, and another thing, why do y'all let the people sit out here for two and a half hours and listen to everything else for people who coming for y'all approval or want money? Y'all get them fifteen, a presentation fifteen minutes, but the, but the people that you say first, they sit out here for two and a half hours for you to give them three minutes. That is so, so unfair. You say the people are first, that we so first. Why do the ones that come beg for money or ask for money or approval for something they need y'all to do? They get a presentation and they get to be up here so long. Because our conditions in our neighborhood, y'all, is the poor. They hadn't got any better, and I know everybody say it's going to get better, it take time. But you know, us on the Northside, we don't feel that way. And I'm gonna tell you, in the street, the, the people out there, they tell you, they actually tell you how they feeling and what they think and what they ain't going to do. Who they ain't going to vote for. I shouldn't have never voted for them. Believe it or not, people really do feel that way because they get tired of being left out the loop. And it ain't about no top being, no, no house. It's about condition that the neighborhood is in, the streets are in. They sinking in. They got holes in them. You, you almost can't drive on them. And all we say is to make the plan fair, fair. You spend eight million dollars for the modest car wait, and it ain't down. In brick construction company, truck was on that lot the other day. Now, I don't know if that, why they would be out there. I know that's a debris removal place, and I know it's got something to do with Senator Brick, uh, uh, this new Senator and her family. I mean, what about us on the Northside? Come down a little further and y'all, they toured them areas. Mr. Here was there before Ms. Tate. They came out there and they hit, they toured the areas. And I'm sorry to say, but it ain't in no better condition than it was four years ago. And I'm saying, we don't expect y'all to do it all. We don't expect y'all get everything done, but be kind of fair, because you don't have no problem going up to Southside. You know, we hear about the fifty million dollars in Smithfield, but what they don't discuss is the six hundred million that they get, because you, they don't bring cameras out for that. They don't bring cameras out for what they do on this side. So all I'm saying is would y'all please be fair, consider the fact that just because we in poor areas don't mean we don't want smooth sidewalks and nice streets. I think sometimes people think because of where you live, you don't care. I care. I can't clean all up. I can't get on all our neighbors, but I can do my part. And I'm asking you to do your part and, and think about us on that. We want nice streets and nice parks. We don't have a park in Sipico, friend, but we want them. I want y'all to know, yes, we do want. Because of our situation financially, where we live, doesn't mean we don't care about what we stay. And I thank you for letting me have my say.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other speakers? All right. Thank you, counselors. At this time, we do want to thank our officers on duty, Cedric Pinkert, Ken Morris, and Rick Fry. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move a second.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.